Called a meeting to order. Proper quorum has been determined. Ask for approval of minutes for April 24th, 2012.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have old business. Oh, I'm sorry. We have no old business. We've got new business on a final plat. Jane Anne Lester, 1.55 acres. Property located at 157 Sunrise Avenue. Tax map 017D. Group D. Parcel 4.01. R2 zoning district. Parcel owned by Jane Anne. Mrs. Sanders.
All technical items have been addressed. We are just missing the signature from the surveyor. I think it was just an oversight. And he is not here. That was Richard Stem. So Enoch Gerald from Huddleston Steel so that we can have that easily remedied. Otherwise, all the applicable items from the workshop have been taken care of satisfactorily.
With all items being addressed, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept and submitted.
I have a motion to accept and submitted. Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have a site plan. AG Holding LP, Phase 3 on Jefferson Pike Industrial Subdivision, Lot 17. 6.32 acres. Property located at 182 O Jefferson Pike. Tax map 018K. Group A. Parcel 1.16 and 1.17. I-1 zoning district. Parcel owned by AG Holding LP. Mrs. Sanders.
All the technical items have also been addressed for the AG Holding site plan.
With all items being addressed, do I hear a motion? Motion to approve. I have a motion to approve. Do you hear a second?
Make a second, Mr. Chairman. Another question. On the square footage, has that been rectified or is it going to be rectified?
It depends on how you look at it. The square footage is correct. Depend-- it's just, it's... The office is actually two stories within the building. So that doesn't actually change the square footage of the footprint of the building. The warehouse space is going to be one story. The office will be two stories. So the square footage as it pertains to the site data chart is correct.
Been a site plan, Mr. Chairman. I believe that'd be okay. Just obviously, let's make a note of that for the final.
Okay. I have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have a site plan for Ed Gahl property. .25 acres. Property located at 120 Glendale Drive. Tax map 018Alpha through Alpha. Parcel 10.01. C2 zoning district. Parcel owned by Ed Gahl.
Okay. As we discussed at the workshop, the applicant has submitted these as-built drawings which do not match the approved site plan. The applicant was not at the workshop. I have not heard since... I haven't heard anything from him. We have not received anything else from him. So therefore, in your report, you'll see my report, which is the same report I gave out at the workshop. And then I also stapled a page in there that has the list of deficiencies that were identified on March the 9th by the co-director at the time. So as of now, we have no new information from Mr. Gahl or his representative.
Mr. Chairman, we spent a lot of time with his applicant, somebody who's ago on this property. And he attended all those meetings. It seemed a little strange to me that he's not attending the workshop nor this one. Therefore, with that, I'll make a motion to deny the site plan as soon upon the discrepancies 1 through 9 as listed by the city planner, as well as the letter dated 3/9 from the co-director.
Okay. I have a motion to deny. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to deny is granted. Next, we have final plat. Plat, I'm sorry. United Steelworkers, 6.3 acres. Property located at 209 Hazelwood Drive. Tax map 017 Foxtrot. Group B. Parcel 3. R1 zoning district. Parcel owned by United Steelworkers Local 1055 Building Corporation. Mrs. Sanders.
Okay. The great majority of the technical items have been addressed. However, the question of the sewer, the mandatory sewer connection versus the existing septic has not been fully taken care of. In speaking with Mr. Gerald earlier today, he stated that T-Deck has been contracted by the steelworkers to inspect the existing septic system, and that won't be taking place till next week. So I believe that's the major issue that we have at the moment. If the mandatory sewer connection is going to be utilized, then we would need to take the Health Department stamp certificate off of the final plat. If the Health Department and the Public Works Director agree that it's okay to maintain the existing septic system, we need to have a letter from the Director of Public Works. So that item hasn't quite been addressed yet, but I believe Mr. Gerald would like to speak to that.
Thank you very much. I'm Enoch Gerald with Huddleston Steel Engineering. The Union Hall had a meeting tonight. Mr. JP Wall has come. A lot of the meetings couldn't be here. And I have a receipt where they've submitted and paid the fee to the state. It's the Groundwater Protection to come out and inspect it. Groundwater Protection's several weeks behind. They think they'll get to it this week. And what they would like to do, to keep moving forward, rather than delaying another month, this may delay them a week or so, but go ahead and approve it contingent of... And then if the Health Department and the Public Works Director approve it, we can leave their seal as is. If not, we can take it off. And you know, Kristen and Kyle, really Kristen, I guess, can make that determination after we give them proper documentation whether to take it on or off. And they would like to go ahead and request that y'all approve it with that one condition, so they can keep moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, historically, we've not done any Subject 2 in recent years due to other issues. So I have a concern with that. The rest appears to be okay, but we still have the four items that need to be addressed technically. And as you know, we have, as a board, we need to vote within 30 days. So we need to vote one way or the other, or let the applicant defer until the next meeting.
I agree with you. With it being four items, four separate items. I mean, I know it would be a month wait, but I think a deferral would probably be better unless you don't want to deferral or you want us to vote on it.
I understood there was just one item. Is it a four item?
We've got four, yeah.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that. I thought it was item 7.
Well, actually, item 2 and 3 go hand in hand because of the sewer connection issue. Item 1 is that the signature block for the ownership needs to be signed. And then item 4, we're just, we were missing the center line and distance from the center to the property line along Mason Road. But those are, item 1 and 4 are fairly minor as opposed to the sewer issue, so...
And Mason Road, the right of way varies. There, the best we can tell for both plats. I don't know that we know exact center line on Mason Road because there's a curve at the end. So that's the reason we put that it varies because we're not for sure, unless y'all have some documentation on that. No, but it may be a couple of items, but it's really just that one thing determining if the Health Department will review it or not. That's... And I'm not sure about the site plan. I mean, I guess that's next item, but is there anything on it that's outstanding other than that same issue?
Same issue.
Okay. I mean, like I said, they've been, I guess, educated this for the last three or four months. They thought they could come in one month, get a permit, and take off. And it's taken them a long time. And maybe a few more weeks wouldn't hurt them, but they really wanted to move forward because they've got some financing that they need to get these approvals to get their financing in place. And they talked to JP earlier, and he wished he could come, but they had a meeting and...
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
What's the date on that receipt?
May 21st.
So yeah, it was last Monday. They knew at least a month ago that that needed to be taken care of, in my opinion.
And they did. And I brought that to their attention. And they had an election, had a new president, a new board, and it took them longer to get this to the check to the state. It took them a while. And you know, if y'all feel the best thing's deferred, but I mean, they really want to move forward if they can.
Let me ask you this, though. Can the engineer ask for deferral or does the applicant have to ask for deferral?
He's speaking on behalf of the applicant, and he can request it. One thing I would like to add, though, on the plat also, it's not really, it's just something that Enoch talked about, was the letter of credit or a bond if, because they've got to do sewer improvements, is if they're not going to do the improvements prior to getting the plat recorded, they would need to have the draft letter of creditor-bond and the amount for us tonight to look at. I'm not seeing anything on that. So if it does get approved tonight, then they would not be able to pull a building permit or anything or get the plat recorded until they get the sewer line installed.
And they're aware of that. They're planning on installing it. They have a contractor lined up to do that. So they're planning on installing it prior to the plat.
I understand that, but I just think they didn't give them proper notice about getting this approval on the septic thing. And that's sort of like getting the cart before the horse in a way, so...
Well, if y'all feel it's best, I mean, they don't have a choice. But I talked to JP today, and he would like to move forward, just so he could get... He needs his approval to get his financing started. It's really delaying him as much as anything else. So whatever y'all feel is best. If we need to defer, he will, but he would love to move forward if he could.
I may have to agree with my fellow committee members because if there was a precedent set, and even though, you know, this is probably a minor thing that can be taken care of, but if the precedent is set and someone comes with a major, then we're stuck because we've allowed it once before. We don't want to establish the precedence. That's what I'm thinking. But again, we have an open vote for it. So it's your choice. If you want us to vote on it, we can vote, or you can stay what you want while you're at the podium.
They wish to defer these next two items to next month. Thank you all very much.
All right. Next, we have a site plan for US, I guess, that falls back. Do we have a site plan for US Steel?
He's asking for a...
For the same thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Why is he in the front? What's one of those site plans in the final plan?
Oh, I guess that word... Okay, we have a control on the site plan also. Next, we have recommendations to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Rezoning request. Property located along Carruthers Road. Tax map 029. Parcel 29.00. Consisting of 92.82 acres. Current zoning PDR, planning density residency as a zoning district. Proposed zoning R2, medium residential. Zoning district requested by Gary Batson. Parcel owned by Synergy Bank. Mrs. Sanders.
Okay. As I discussed with you all at the workshop, Mr. Batson, on behalf of Synergy Bank, is asking to rezone the 92.82 acres along Carruthers Road at the intersection with McCall Lane across from Brookside, from planned density residential to R2, which is medium density residential. And that is the zoning classification. It was back in 2007 before it was rezoned as part of the Carruthers Crossing project. And currently, the... I'll show you back here. The... That's the parcel right there, the stripes. It is, across the street is Brookside. It's R2. All of the parcels on its eastern boundary and southern boundary are R1, fairly large landholders. And it is bounded on the west by Davidson County. Mr. Batson is here. Some of the questions that we, at this juncture, haven't quite determined yet, you know, we all know that Carruthers Road is a very narrow, winding road with a deteriorating bridge. We'd probably need to have some sort of traffic study to determine necessary access points, maybe a turning lane. And I know that Mr. Batson and his other business partner have looked into the availability of sewer and water, but I'm not sure what they have found out about that. So I believe Mr. Batson would like to speak on this project.
My name is Gary Batson. I'm representing this project. And if y'all saw me walk in, I think I'd rather be lucky than good it worked out for me. And if anybody's got your window rolled down, you better go roll it up. But anyway, yes, I appreciate Kyle and Kristen's help on this project. It's no longer the same property owners as owns the larger project that had those plans. The topo of this project really lends itself towards single-family homes, and that's what we want to go back to. We will have a traffic study, I think, at the concept plan stage performed. We have talked about that. We have checked the water pressure, and it seems like we have enough pressure on that. And we have talked to the sewer. We have not done any official request yet, but we have talked to that. We... There's a Colonial Gas Line that runs through the project, and we've talked to that guy. And you know, we're working on this. We've got somebody that wants to go on it. And we want to move on and just, you know, immediately follow up with the process each time. We've looked at the next two, three months to try to make each deadline. So we're looking for a favorable recommendation.
What is the proposed building that was going to go in the PDR versus how many homes in the R2? Do we know that?
We are looking at 200 homes. If you went straight by the zoning, it would be 282, 90, but we've got a layout, and you just... We're not going to put them on that type. We've got, you know, a stream that we're buffering between. We've got the Colonial Pipeline. I don't know what was originally planned to...
Generally, I mean, when you... The density would have been the same. However, the original project had several hundred acres in Davidson County. It had a lot of clustered open... It was, you know, clustered, not traditional subdivision with some percentage of commercial as well. So, and that's going to... There won't be the commercial. There won't be the clustering and the open space. So the number of homes should be the same. It's just that it's going to be more of a traditional grid or, you know, layout as opposed to what was originally planned.
These homes will take advantage of the topo. I hope she was finished up. And go back maybe a little bit further back than the cluster homes. We'll be using that topo to build some basement lots, which I think is really selling strong right now. That's what the builder wants to do. So we'll be using that topo to build a better product, we believe, or a more sellable product.
Just out of curiosity, I've heard a lot of people talking about wanting the larger lots. Why would we not consider an R1, where you have a larger lot? I'm just asking because I've had a lot of people asking me that. What happened to the big lots? We want to see what's left with bigger lots.
I think the price range of this builder, he's had... The builder that I think the Mike has talked to on this, he's had a lot of luck with this type of product. When you... The infrastructure is going to be the same. So when you go to build a bigger lot, you're going to have to up the product price in order for it to work out. And they just don't feel with... These homes are, you know, with the basement will be bigger than, a little bit bigger than what's around them in some areas, but we just think if you jump up to a lot bigger lots... And I don't think R1's a whole lot bigger, is it?
Oh, yeah.
The same size or...
It's 15,000 feet.
It's a little...
So you would be cutting the lots dramatically, and the infrastructure just wouldn't... It wouldn't pay for them to do it.
To better answer your question, the PDR is its own zone. However, the density is the same as what it's overlaying. So, but it was R2 before, so when it was rezoned to PDR, the density was still the same as the R2. So essentially, the density's not changing. It's just that it won't have the other, you know, the other, the commercial, the open space. So that's not changing. No, it was on R2 before.
Just a quick question. Your infringement of would the traffic go into Davidson County and onto the interstate or would it come through Laverne?
Well, you know, the main entrance will be off of Carruthers, and we are aware of a potential site distance problem there. And we show it branching out towards Davidson County and hitting into the Davidson County property in several locations. There's a, on the low side of us, there's a string, so we don't... In larger lots, so we don't see going into that area.
Do you have any pictures of the road with you tonight?
I do have a layout, you know, and obviously, we'll be looking for your input at any time. I don't have anything swallowed on a large scale if you want me to show it to you, but...
I was just looking at...
That's the best picture of the road right there.
This right here. I mean, the size of the road, the narrow bridge, the intersection at Walden Road, they all concern me from a safety standpoint. I mean, when we add more to it. Before, I think when we looked at it, we looked at it as being connected more to the development in Davidson County, where we'd have more vehicles going in that direction than coming into Laverne. And it was still a great concern even at that, you know? Because coming out of Walden Road, it's a really bad intersection.
When we get the cost, the current layout we have, which is close to what we will be submitting in concept shows, 1, 2, 3, 5, and they're all into Davidson County.
Will they just be cul-de-sacs now?
They'll be cul-de-sacs, and we go to the property line and then build out. And we will be building...
Is that it right there?
Yeah, we have at least five, and, you know, we... The take-down is probably 30 lots a year. So we'll be up there with just 30 lots right there in Carruthers, and we'll...
Well, is any of that property in Davidson County, do you know? Has it been developed? Has any streets cut in that area right there?
No.
Okay. I mean, what...
There is.
How do we feel about Davidson County working with us and making sure those cul-de-sacs become streets later on? Is what I'm saying, through streets.
One thing you probably want to consider is will that development ever make it to this? Because it's kind of stalled right now. So if it doesn't develop out, then you're going to be left with one access.
Yeah, see, I have an issue too with just being one access there at Carruthers Road right now coming out. I mean, if you have an emergency and that intersection's blocked, how do you access it? I mean, that's...
And I had the big concept plan of the other one, and they were working on the roads. You know, the big book that we had? Y'all still have that? I've got it back there. And I mean, they were...
They were working it all together. Work can be done that way.
And also, there's something that you need to remember. You're looking at 200 homes. I'm working right now with the state trying to get a piece of property to build a new pumping station over in that area because of the pressure and getting the water to the tanks and all of that. So, and that's... You're looking at probably next year before we can even... You know, it's going to be September before we get the approval, if we even get to buy that piece of property. If not, we're going to have to start over and try to find a new property.
Would the water be coming off the main on Walden Road to this property? Is that the way it would be fed?
Basically, what the project, the mayor's talking about is kind of what is going to be the driving factor. We need to be able to... It'll be fed from the Sanford Knob tank, so we might have to keep that tank full, which that tank supplies McFarland tank and that whole side of the businesses.
And that's what we've had issues with in the last couple of years.
Keeping that tank at a level it needs to be. Which I know Mr. Batson said they have kind of looked at it but have not made a formal request. So that's why we wouldn't have that information to tell you exactly what we're looking at because we don't know the exact numbers he's definitely looking at.
Just looking from the infrastructure standpoint and what is... You know, we really need to think about doing any of the rezonings until we get the infrastructure to match what's going there. I mean, we still have a lot of road issues. And like I said, you're looking at that big pumping station, and that's roughly 700,000, 800,000 like they are.
And I think this is a little bit different because it's not a straight... We want to down, you know, we want to go back to what it originally was. We understand that if we go through the concept plan and stuff that we, you know, there'll be stuff that we have to work out. But, you know, this is basically just asking for the same zoning. They could put 200 lots on there if it's zoned right now. So these are just larger lots that, you know, take into account a little bit more of the topography.
Well, in this layout right here, I see big strips of land between lots and back up to streets. What happens? What's on that property? Is it just hillside? You see what I'm saying? On this layout right here. Excuse me, I'm just going to walk over and show you. I mean, I see a big piece of property here, a big one there, and you've got these lots.
Yeah, that's a... That would be incorporated into a lot, or that would be owned by the, you know... I'm not sure exactly how they want to set it up, but that's a... That first one you pointed out is actually in a valley.
Okay, in a valley, okay.
I want to make some... I want to ask a question, make that myself clear. When the PDR, when they were talking about the planned density, I was coming to these meetings, and then also, we had to vote to do that. And I understood at that time that they also were going to help get these roads prepared to handle where they were taken, their part from Laverne, fixing the roads to meet up with that property in Davidson County. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, you are correct. I stood in the board and listened through it.
Okay.
The argument was, was which way does the traffic go? Does it head towards Davidson County or to Laverne? And I remember speaking about it myself, was we need to drive it back through Nashville because they had the infrastructure going in, and the build-out was going to be on their side. And obviously, the build-out has not happened on Davidson County's side. So we do have an issue with the road, the water. And obviously, the infrastructure itself in the city is going to support this if this goes in. So at the moment, there's some real issues that I think we have to look at or has to be overcome if this applicant keeps moving forward. Has there been a site plan put up to show whether these cul-de-sacs are going to connect with Davidson County? Has that been proposed or drawn out yet?
I would be glad to, you know, anytime you want, but prior to the concept plan, talk to them. The original plan and what they have built so far in Davidson County shows stubouts heading this way. There's a piece of property between what was developed. There's a vacant piece of property that's probably owned by some bank somewhere, and then the property in Laverne. And my experience with Davidson County is they're going to look for all the interconnectivity. going to look for all the interconnectivity that, that they have, so originally, I, I do feel like if, if maybe we can, we can get a, a letter, you know, as we go on saying, yes, as that property is developed, it will be connected, because that's, if not, then they would have a long series of roads, just like Laverne, that, that would be, have to turn around and drive back out, so I think, I think they're going to look for that.
And historically, this board's looked at the one in, one out, you know, anything over 100 is, is a lot, now this is, you know, 280, and I, that's a real issue for, for that little road.
And I understand that, and, and I think as far as the rezoning goes, again, it is, it was R2, I think maybe when we get to the concept plan, again, the takedown may be 30 lots now, so you're talking six years, and if, if we have to say, if, if at some point in there when we do the traffic studies and stuff, you know, I'd like to say they're going to take care of it, but when they reflect probably what you're thinking of in the traffic study, we can, we can sort of say, you know, 50, 60 lots, two years, you know, and I can't tell you that deadline, but I, I wouldn't, they, they would be opposed to saying, hey, at some point in time, this is too much for one entrance, until you get a secondary entrance.
But that was the point, you keep saying that you're about the same amount, when we voted on the PDR, that's what, the point I just made, they were going to do the roads.
But they were going to do them in phases too.
You know, so.
I, I agree with you, but they were, they were going to do them in phases too.
But, I mean, they, they've already, I'm sure that one part there where they built, it's already a nice big, I mean, it's been redone on Davidson County's side, so it is a big difference when they were like, okay, they had the plan, this is how we're going to do the roads, et cetera, et cetera, with this, we don't have any plans or assurances that the roads are going to be done, and, and that goes back to, you fix the infrastructure, then you do the building, and I think that's where Laverne has missed the boat before, we've done all the building and haven't fixed our infrastructure.
You, you mentioned that, that the property's changed hands, is that correct?
It's, it's currently owned by a bank, and the bank has a builder that's looking into building, he's, we've discussed takedowns, he's, he's talking 30, 30 units a year, and so.
But the, the point being is, on the previous one, it's PDR, it's the same ownership on Davidson County's side as it did Laverne's side, therefore there was some incentive on the ownership to put the infrastructure in as well, the roads to match up what we, we agreed to do.
Correct, and, and, and I, you made that, I, I understand that point, and I agree with it, and I think, you know, I, I don't think that's, to me, is an issue as much with the rezoning as when we get to the concept plan, and, and you can correct me, obviously, but when we get to the concept plan, I think, from what I've heard now, we need to talk, I, my understanding of how Metro planning, they're going to want the interconnectivity, and we can discuss that with them and say, oh, y'all going to require that when they get to that point for them to connect, or you're going to leave Laverne sitting out all, all this property, all this stuff, so I think that's an issue that we need to brought up, my request would be that, that you send me out with a, a warning that that's going to be required as we move on with the concept plan, and that maybe even, even analyze a little bit in the traffic study, that again, is required at the concept plan stage.
I think that, I understand what you're saying, the trouble we have here is always the chicken and the egg.
Correct.
And if we do convert to R2, then you're going to come in with different plans, we can still say no, but then it's R2 again, we had, this board had a clear decision of what was going to happen with the PDR, with the intersection roads in Davidson County, going back to R2, there's no guarantee of that with two different ownerships.
But there's two different ownerships, and that's a fact, so if we stayed in, in, in the PDR right now and, and sent in a concept plan to zone, excuse me, to zone it or to develop it as a PDR, you know, then you, you still have that same issue, I don't think we're creating a new issue by rezoning, I don't think we're creating a problem that isn't already there, because, you know, the, 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 there are different banks, and, and the situation we are now, one bank's not going to volunteer to go take over the other bank's, the problem, so.
Agreed, but let me just, let me just, since we've been talking about this, let me say this, if it was a different zoning and you come in for PDR today with that concept, I would have a problem with it anyway, A, because of the infrastructure, B, because of the road, and I were going to talk about this, but I make a, send unfavorable recommendations to Mayor Alderman.
I have a unfavorable recommendation proposed, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a recommendation to the Board of, Board of Mayor and Alderman, rezoning request, property located at 514 Old Nashville Highway at the intersection of Cheney Boulevard, tax map 018P, group C, parcel five, consisting of one half acre, concerned, current zoning is R3, which is high density residential zoning district, proposed zoning is requesting a C2 highway service, zoning district requested by Tommy Bowen, of Bowen, parcel owned by Ronnie Wilkerson, Ms. Kesten.
Okay, as you recall at the workshop, Mr. Wilkerson believes Mr. Bowen has abandoned his, his plan to lease this property, so I do not have a formal withdrawal request in hand from Mr. Bowen, but he's not here, and I don't believe he's planning on pursuing this project, so.
Okay, can I have a recommendation?
Motion to deny.
Have a motion to deny, do I hear a second?
No, 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 this has to be a motion to send a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to council.
Motion to make an unfavorable recommendation to the Board and Mayor Alderman.
Okay, I have a motion for unfavorable recommendation, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries, unfavorable, next, consideration of ordinance to amend provisions for sign variances.
Okay, um, I don't know if you can read that up there, it is, I, I passed it out at the workshop, and I'll pass it out again, but this is the, the amendment to allow for one, one more variance procedure for signs, and it's for an applicant in a business, in a, in a commercial or industrial district who does not fall within the 3,000 meter feet from the interchange to allow, to apply for an interstate on sign, and we have, as I discussed at the workshop, we've been petitioned to look at this in addition to, it's, our, our current regulations allow for almost the majority of Interstate 24 to have one of these except for about 4,000 feet, so any business that falls within that, that, that distance won't actually be, be allowed to apply for one, so this would allow for, for that, for that application if the board feels that the current or planned signage does not address the needs of the building or the lot, and the wording of, of the proposed section D matches what is in, in our regulations for section A of sign variances, so it would be on a case-by-case basis.
Can we discuss this at the workshop, and I'll make most, send a favorable recommendation on the ordinance to amend provisions as listed.
Okay, I have a motion for a favorable recommendation for consideration of ordinance to be amended, do I hear a second?
Second.
Opposed? I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, or recommendation carries. Next, we have funds and letters of credit update, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Truman, have not had any changes on the sheet that I've passed out since, since the workshop, I will be in contact, we had the developer on Lake Forest, Phase 72 and 81, and also Hampton Roads, Phase 3, to get those extended, other than that, everything else is, is up to date.
Any more questions from the board?